He's not. Okay, this sentence. Always. Um, let's see, how did they do it? I miss my.
No, this isn't right. It doesn't, because it's unclear. It's trying to apply the standards. But you. And reason it not kind of said.
This is interesting. This is a point.
All right, I've got six thirty. Two. So I think we'll start the meeting. So welcome everyone to the Partic Park Township Zoning Board of Appeals, Monday, July first, two thousand twenty four. Everybody, I'm going to call it to order. Everybody has an agenda in front of them, hopefully. Everybody's had a moment to look at that and look for a motion to approve and get us started tonight.
So.
Just support, support. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, motion approved. Approval of last meeting's minutes from June three. I don't know if anybody's got any comments from what they've seen that we need to amend. Like we're satisfied with what we see.
It's very good motion. So good minutes. Uh, the gym for the twenty one meetings presented.
Have support?
Support.
All fair?
Hi.
Motion moves. All right, our next item on the agenda, number four for the public hearing, number one. Mika, would you be able to present that to us?
Uh, this is a request for an oversized accessory building. It's on Lake Shore Drive, an R two zoning district. Uh, it's a fifty foot wide lot, and the request is for an accessory building that is about a little bit over a thousand square feet. Uh, there were a couple pieces of correspondence. Um, one of them um, didn't want to leave their name. There was somebody I talked to on the phone. They expressed some concerns about about the size. Um, and the fittedness with the parcel, um, but that was not one that left their name. So um, that's just as information. That was something that we got from a neighbor. Um, there are three three factors at play here. There's the size, overall size, a square footage of the accessory building. Um, the height of the accessory building, and then the setback of the accessory building. So those are the three things uh that the Board of Appeals will be deciding on.
Okay. I don't know if we've had, we had items in the past with three separate individual requests like that.
Not too often. I mean, that maybe occasionally, but not, not too often.
Okay. Okay, uh, this time I guess I'm gonna open up the applicant is present to speak for or against that. If you would like to do that, please approach to the podium. If you could sign in, please. Um, the sheet should be there. You state your name and your address.
My name is Penny Austin. And give me if I'm a little nervous because I've never done this before. My husband was supposed to be here with me, but he was unable to attend, so I brought my mother for her moral support here. But um, yes, as Mika had stated, we are are um going for a size variance for the detached garage. Um, and I can just go over a couple of the reasons. Um, and just to give you um some historical background on the property. So this was my grandparents, my mother's um parents. They bought it in nineteen sixty. The house was built in fifty eight or nine, we're not sure. So um, our goal is um to keep it our family cottage. Um, we're going to rebuild. Um, our permit is submitted to the state. Um, we should be getting approval anytime from Eagle. Um, but we wanted to build a detached accessory building um to house our vehicle. So my mother will be living with us, my husband and I. So we went her car, my car for the attached garage, and then the um detached garage would house a pickup truck and also another car and a quad. So we, we were debating outside and we decided to go with forty seven feet long because our goal is to preserve as many trees on the property as possible. So we put it in an area and you were able to go out there where um we are keeping as many um trees and because it's a fifty foot lot and the um garage comes out twenty two feet wide, it's really tough to make that turn into the garage. So um we have to, we have to pull the pickup truck into the east side of the building. So we will have a pickup truck in there that will be, you know, parked the long way and then another car. And that's where we came to the forty seven feet. That would be the most suitable size to fit what we needed in there. And then we have a storage area up top for um outdoor furniture and things like that. So we're really only asking, and you know, and this has kind of been, there's been a discrepancy on the actual size of the lot because they understand it can't be greater than two percent. So if you look at the um the plat map, it's forty two thousand one hundred. If you look at our most recent G I F that um, you can go associate their civil engineer that we're working with measured, it was um around thirty six thousand thirty seven. So we're really only asking for about point four percent more than the two percent. Because if you're looking at that um size, it's, it's really only about, we're only asking for about three hundred additional square feet. So um in terms of our neighbors, and I'm curious to know who um calls because we have spoken with both our neighbors to the south and the north. And the garage will sit on the south side of the property, which um he has no problem with that. We have spoken with him and um he has said, whatever you need to do. I mean, just in terms of the, I'm kind of talking setback now too. His garage actually is two feet from our property line. But again, that was built uh years and years ago. So and we are set to the east of that. And he had no problem with that. It doesn't impede anybody's view. Um, and then also the reason um I guess getting to the the variance on the setback. The reason we're asking for five feet is because to make that turn into the garage, um, it's tight. And the reason it's tight is because our neighbors to the north planted several large pine trees right on their property line many years ago. And so they are extending about five to six feet into our property. So like I said, to keep peace with the neighborhood, they are naturalists. They don't want trees cut down. And that has been our goal through this whole thing. So um, that's why a variance setback of the five feet would be greatly appreciated. Um, and then so I've covered the size, the height. Um, the height is actually congruent with the house plans. The house um garage is about thirty two feet high. The um height for the garage, detached garage is twenty three point five. And again, the reason we asked for that little bit is to have storage up there to um store outdoor furniture and things like that. So um, I just want to make sure I covered everything in terms of uh size. So we're just asking for about three hundred square feet more. Um, I, I make it um all of that, I believe. Oh, and just so, just so you know, too, the garage, the detached garage is about forty feet from the house. And it's about two hundred fifty feet from the road. So you could hardly even see it. I mean, it's really surrounded by trees. Our neighbors to the north are the ones that maybe might be concerned from the side, but they can't even see it. Because there's very, very high pine trees to the north. So um you don't know if there's anything else here. Does anyone have any questions?
That was going to be my next topic for us. Any, any of us here at the, the table had questions for the applicant right now? No. I think we're good right now. If you want to take a seat unless you got more to add. I think we're okay.
I think I covered everything.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So no questions from the board at this time. I, I'm gonna I guess I'll open it up for public hearing. If there's anyone in the uh audience tonight who wants to speak for, against, share any comments, please. Please do so. This is your time.
I have this one thing. I don't want to get the car outside.
She's in the attached garage. She's in the attached garage, no? Alright, so no, no questions uh from the audience. I'll close the public hearing and open it up for a board discussion at this point.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Mika.
You may.
Um, the staff report indicates that you were waiting your back from the touch of engineer on the turning radius issue. I'm just wondering if there's any additional information.
He said it, he sent me a template and it looked like around twenty four feet to make a smooth turn for a uh for like a, a truck. So twenty four feet out from the garage would be the turning radius that would be needed.
It was difficult to, I mean, see the, some of the um dimensions on the site. I mean, to know for sure we're looking at it because it's so small.
Yeah. Um, yeah.
It was hard for me to verify some of that stuff, but what do, what do we have from the face of garages is laid out to the edge of the driveway than the permit to turn, you know?
Let me pull it up a second on the.
No problem.
Other five.
Graphically, I was just looking at their, their attachment on page C two oh two over there. It just looked graphically less than twenty two feet, but was that upper right? Yeah.
Seems like it would be a quick garage, just twenty two plus a setback.
Hmm.
It was not twenty five feet left, but turn out.
So on the, on the plan as submitted, it actually just shows eighteen feet. Uh, but that's with, I think the plan that was shown is actually the one that was submitted to Eagle and that has a ten foot um setback. So if that's reduced to five, let's see. That would be about twenty three feet.
The X E P to return from the driveway? So it'd be tight. Okay.
I have a little concern about the height of it. I am looking at the.
I'm sorry, would you be able to talk to your microphone?
I'm not very good at this. I will, I will. Do I got it now? My, I'm a little concerned about the height mainly because there seems to be lots of storage in the layout on the main floor. You've got those, you know, the garage doors and you have storage on each side. Um, anyway, my experience, an awful tall upstairs. You know, it seems like a lot of storage at the twenty foot could be met and be attractive and um serve the purpose for lots of storage. This is a large building. So if we approve the square footage size on the main floor, it seems like that's, you know, could be uh meet the requirements for the twenty feet. Because we've got a lot of that side that isn't covered by by garage doors on each.
Yeah. So did I read somewhere, Mika, on the, in the notes somewhere that it says initially it's twenty four feet, but now it's like twenty three and a half feet?
Yeah, she got a more precise number from, from the architect. So it's, it's actually twenty three point five.
Okay. Or three and a half feet taller than allowable.
Yeah. That's a pretty tall accessory building.
So we've got, you know, we've got three standards or three issues here. We're looking at, right? So we've got um a side setback is one with four standards to review. We've got the accessory building size with five standards. And then the same set of standards again for the height. Is that correct, Mika? So it could be that we are good with one of these and not two of them or two of the three or three. And we don't, it doesn't matter which order we look at these in. I don't think one has any importance over the other, right? Or no bearing on the other. They could, I suppose, if somebody has a strong opinion about it.
Ask for some verification on one of the comments.
Please.
This is under I guess it's on page four, top of page four. Um, the staff comment on one of the elements under thirty eight seventy, and it speaks to other parcels um wanting like Michigan, a hundred parcels with similar dimensions. Um, and then it goes on to say that there may be some precedent established from this decision. So it wasn't clear to me whether that was a concern um or what, what the concern, the nature of the concern would be. So can you speak to that?
Yeah, it, there are this is narrow for Lake Michigan. But it's not the only narrow lot on Lake Michigan. And so that was the concern that I would have is that, you know, on a fifty foot lot, uh, most of the, most of the garages will be facing the street. Um, if, if a variance is granted for one, then there are enough parcels out there that that it could be something that would come before the Z B A again. So maybe that's okay. And maybe that's something that you'd like to see on those narrower parcels, but it's not um it's definitely a minority. There, you know, as far as how many parcels there are on Lake Michigan, it's, I, I wouldn't be able to guess at a percentage, but it's not a lot of them, but it's enough that I think it's worth bearing in mind.
And on the other parcels where the garages are facing the street, um, are those generally done within the, within the existing setback requirements? Are we, I recall too many variants requests on those.
No, as far as I could see, I didn't, I didn't go um parcel by parcel. I was kind of just getting, trying to get a feel for what those looked like. As far as I could tell, most of them looked like they were within the existing setbacks. Now, uh, these have been around for a long time, so there could very well be accessory structures that would were built when, when zoning codes were different. So that is a possibility.
With the stairway is different. With the stairway is difficult to make it much narrower. You know, depth wise, because it gives you eighteen feet for your car or a truck.
I mean, the alternative, uh, something like this, instead of pulling ninety degrees into your garage off the drive would be to pull in parallel to your driveway, right, is what you're kind of alluding to. Was there um, I guess maybe for the applicant, was there ever a decision or you know, something else you had looked at to try to park? Pull into your garage from the ends only instead of from the sides?
Well, there's. I would be a. Maybe or kind of a little, no, starting single way where our owner was engineering helping. And the latest problem are the trees that are growing on our lot. Um, but we did get a door on the east end, and that's certainly for the truck to get in. Um, because there's a very, very large old tree there that could not let us stop. And it's kind of a nice, we'll keep it in the driveway the way it is. So shot here.
Yep.
But then my husband started a lot smaller, so.
Did the architect talk to you or did you discuss anything with the architect about the stairway? You know, because that makes your garage, I, I'm, I'm just asking uh to have it on this one end where you come in, go up the stairs and you have a full, rather than cutting it right in the middle. That might
Yeah, we did.
Narrow it up a little bit. Yep.
Yeah. And then the car is inside of the stairs. The truck, the truck, the kind of in your your again, the, the space of the garage is yeah, we're always but I, yeah, I, I don't even know how much room is on the side of the wall. But it's not actually need a lot of, we need, you know.
Stand up room.
Yeah.
Got to stand up. Getting that three and a half feet down.
Well, I do have some other concerns about the height, especially getting a bit increase in the grade there as well from the road. So I that's mentioned in the staff report and agree with that, but based on what I would plan, so it, it looks beautiful, but I think it would look fairly imposing, even though it is a distance from the street.
Yes, I think I read five feet. Is the difference in elevation, you can kind of see from the circle at least, right?
Yeah, and that is a G I S measurement, but.
Hmm. Would, would there be any acceptance of like a for the height of this thing? I'm just looking at the cross section, the wall section that's on that's provided. You've got ten feet to the ceiling. But there would be a possibility of dropping that thing down a little bit?
Hmm.
And maybe that could be part of a discussion too, just thinking out loud.
Yeah, I'm thinking it could meet the twenty foot requirement. I, I think it, I can't blame the architect for wanting to try to give two more room. It's just that in this particular circumstances, I have some concerns about the height. That's.
Right.
Hmm. Well, and I think the ord- ordinance, is that the word we use for this? When they designed it, twenty feet's pretty big. I, I generally think most of us don't have a twenty foot garage and top. It, it does give you a lot of, of storage. I think, I think you couldn't make that work. Uh, just.
Well, it is hard to tell from what we're showing here, but I think the first level is something that could be brought down a little bit to improve that. And maybe it's a little bit of a you know, root slope. It's a twelve, twelve pitch. I mean, it's, maybe it could be less than to ten, twelve or something. I'm not sure right offhand.
They have dormers too, very nice.
Yeah.
They have a lot of storage upstairs with those dormers. It's a nice design.
Or shed dormer, yeah.
And that here. It works.
Are you indicating a willingness to comply with the required height so that we can then focus on the size and the setback? Is that what you're hearing? Well, Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, I think the record should reflect that the applicant um is effectively withdrawing the request for um an adjustment to the allowable height on the structure.
Note taken. I think that makes some, some good sense for us to move, move forward with a couple others here. You're in agreement? We'll assume that's the case and document that. Okay. So Mika, do we is that good enough for our, our height discussion? To recognize that as? Okay. So we'll have the notes reflect that. And we'll move on to discussing um the setback and the accessory building size. So the size, we've got a thousand thirty four square feet, we're six hundred sixty six square feet. And I'm just going to pick that for us to dwell on right now. That's all right. Um, by right, I guess there was a mention too in the notes about six thousand square feet being gone.
Yeah, and, and that is something that we run across pretty frequently on these parcels. And then floodplain gets the, with the active flood area, it gets into that as well. So it gets a little bit tricky on the lake shore to say, okay, what square foot are we actually working with? So, you know, I was measuring from the print based on, you know, kind of what I was able to see, but there is a little bit of a judgment call in there when you're talking about what that base square footage really is.
But wouldn't, even though it's a loss.
Yeah.
A loss, would you still be? Could you still be factoring in that loss?
I think you can be factoring in that loss. Yeah, I think that as staff, that would be, that would, I wouldn't have that discretion.
I mean, because technically they, they're owning the lake at this point.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it goes well out. I mean, if you were to look at the, the survey, I can't read it enough to know.
Yeah, sorry.
What's on there?
There one in there. Yeah.
But is, is the square, square footage given by dreasing and what you're also telling us?
Very, it was close, uh, because there's some floodplain in there as well. Um, and so they, basically where the high water mark is, is where I calculated it from.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Jane.
I was just curious, did you have any discussion with the architect? Kind of a strange way of putting it, of stretching the building out a little bit. So I know it'd be narrower, but then you could make that twenty five foot term turn and still have basically the same amount. Did he ever discuss that with you? I mean, is there any feet in there that can be fiddled with in the depth of it, you know, as you're driving in? How much uh room did he give you in that? It's hard to read the little, I need my magnifying glass.
Wait to figure out.
Okay, right. I was just wondering if there was a way to fiddle with.
That would be needed because of I mean, I don't think.
Hmm.
As long as.
Hmm.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, parking, parking space is typically about twenty feet long anyways, so you want to be able to get it in.
It's a stairway.
Yeah. But.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like you're trying to, in that side, in that side door, it sounds like you're trying to pull that vehicle in diagonally anyways, right? To kind of miss the stair and, because you don't have enough depth to pull that thing in. Ninety degrees to the door. Where you'll hit the stair.
I got it.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Right, that's how I'm interpreting that.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, are you planning on? Heating that garage, you're cooling it in the summer or? Okay. Yep, yep. Okay. So obviously, you're not going to have any plumbing or anything like that. Okay.
Well, it might be a hole.
Yeah.
It might be water.
Yeah.
On the plan, it looks like there's a concrete pad marked for removal. Is that just a parking pad or something? And then where is your septic? In relation to that, do you do you know? So um, the septic, I believe the nerve is out there, and then the main one is between the rod. Between the existing shed in the house or between where you're proposing to put the? Yeah, the new attached garage, particularly the house with either name. Out there, but the nerve is. Out at that. Which might be. You know, the. On the surface. That, either stage and I had for any sort of.
Think I see that on the proposed plan. I don't know if you saw that or not, but this is what I see here, two takes in this big beach field.
Yeah.
I think that's what I see. So is the, so hold on a minute. What I thought I was seeing, septic, is there septic on both sides of the proposed garage then? Okay, I s- I can see a little bit now. Yeah. Looks like there's two. Okay. And you kind of sandwiched in there.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion with regard to the setback.
Setback, okay.
Jump around a little bit.
Okay, let's do it.
Setback, okay.
Jump around.
Okay, um. See if we can work through this, um, so I have a motion. To approve the request for a reduced. Side yard setback of five feet or ten feet as required. Standards are found in section thirty eight dash seventy. First of which, the strict compliance with the zoning ordinance regulating the minimum area, yard setbacks, frontage, height, bulk or density or other regulation. Would render conformity with those restrictions of the zoning ordinance unnecessarily burdensome. Um, in this instance, uh, this is a narrow. Property as we've been discussing, and while there are other narrow properties um in and around this. Uh, subject property. The record in this case indicates that the location of mature trees and the required septic system. Um, on this property, given its narrow configuration. In conjunction with the minimum required um. Or desired turning radius. Uh, would render strict conformity with the restrictions unnecessarily burdensome. I would note that based on the um. Plan submitted, the location of the septic system, for example, um, would interfere with. Appears that it would interfere with the ability of the applicant to. Drive uh into the garage parallel with the driveway as we see in other. Um, properties similarly situated. Um, so this property is is distinguishable for that reason. Um, second, that granting the request variance. Would do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to other property owners in the zoning district. Um, again, uh, for the reasons stated, this is a relatively narrow parcel, it has an existing structure that appears to be at or near. Um, the setback line, the neighbor's. Accessory building, which is, I would just now as large, um, is also uh closer to. The applicant's property that is currently permitted under the zoning ordinance. And so granting a variance would do substantial justice to the applicant and other properties in the zoning district. Um, that the plight of the property owner or applicant is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not due to general conditions of the zoning district. Um, as. Indicated, there are some similarly situated properties in the zoning district. Um, but this property does have some unique characteristics, uh, mentioned in the other factors. That uh render the plight of the owner or applicant um as being due to the unique circumstances of property. Finally, that the practical difficulties alleged are not self-created. Some of the alleged difficulties result from a desire to have a large accessory structure, so we can't overlook that, um, but ultimately. The difficulties presented here, um, in my opinion, are the, are not self-created in the sense that this um. These conditions have been present since the plat was established, um, almost a hundred years ago. Um, and for that reason, I believe the standard can be met.
Wondering about number two, about substantial justice uh to other property owners, could it be to that this, the distance for this thing away from the primary? Structures is beneficial. Relative to what the. Applicants' condition. Is experiencing with adjacencies. Um, with. Accessory buildings. Closer to their own.
Mm hmm.
Primary structure too, I think this helps. To be a great benefit to the neighbors to not have. Uh, additional congestion, I guess, immediately close to the home.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Number two, that it. It's proposed to be. Um, a substantial distance from the neighboring properties on all sides.
Especially given that. Current condition of that south neighbor of three feet away or two feet away. I think that's something worth noting.
Yeah.
Okay. Support. Have support.
Mm hmm.
All right, take a roll call on that, Mr. Hayden.
The rotations.
Oh, yeah, Tom, you're good.
I thought it was going to be first. I thought.
Morgan.
Yes. Yes.
Sure.
Yes. Yes. All right, so motion approved for the side setback. Now we've got the. Building size. Is left. To discuss, so. Again, we've got. This, this item's got five standards to meet.
Is there unscreened? Land for the south side of the proposed garage? Along the forty seven foot wall? Trees or any type of vegetation? Yeah, I mean. Some landscaping.
I think it was hard, it was a good, it was a good question, harder to decipher from the drawings, we see, I see some plannings, I didn't see any plannings really depicted south of the. Accessory structure to help create that buffer, I mean, given the. The looming presence it may have. Given the elevation change, you know, I think it's. Right.
Maybe we'll be climbing a bit, I think we have to. Look down the road to, you know, the next neighbor.
Mm hmm.
But in this particular, in this particular place, pardon me, case, the only way to make it smaller would be squish it, couldn't be any, you know. To make it in conformity. The depth has to be the depth, so the only way you could. Minimize the size of it would be on each end, the east west wall. With the pickup truck.
Yeah, it. It looks like it's. Going to be a challenge to navigate the two vehicles in there. The way it comes to me too. Okay. I I think that would help, I think that's part of our. Challenge, you know, with this. With this standard is to to make sure we've got, I think it's number five. On here for visual impacts and things like that. Something knowing the applicant is. On board with that. Addition to this, it could be a. Being an added, forget what we call this now, blanking.
A condition.
A condition, thank you, I mean, added condition to the standard.
Did you want to give any more detail to that condition as far as what you'd like to see there?
Well. I mean, is it? It's, it's more than a shrub or something, I think it's more. Arborvitish to give us some height, right?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, I think.
In the.
To label it a screening, so it's not just. Flowers or something, I think it has some height to it, some. Area. Arborvities or some other vegetative screen.
Something that has a similar um shape and opacity and coverage, okay?
Yeah, like an evergreen. Just to maintain.
Because there's not a lot of space there, right, there's, we're talking about a very small area of space. And this will look like from the back.
So it, overall, and this is a large accessory building on property that will have an attached garage, but it seems to me that. Size wise, this is. In keeping with what we've seen in here, um. And I think that. There was some compromise on the part of the applicant with regard to the height, which in my opinion, I I take into consideration now I'm looking at.
Mm hmm.
Square footage on the ground level. Because there may be a little loss of storage up in the. On the second floor. For me, the impact on my neighbors, I think is addressed by the vegetative screening. I do also have concerns about the the precedent that. These large buildings, you know, we see these applications frequently, but I don't. Think that is the applicant's burden to accommodate, that's the tensions.
I mean, it is tough, right, because we're, I mean, just not, not everyone's got the ability to park four vehicles in a garage everywhere. You know. You see it a lot here, but you don't see it everywhere, you know, again, that's. A reflection on lot size. So. Lot size just happens to be really difficult here.
Oh, narrow, it's terrible, yeah.
So it's just that the proportions are really. Unmanageable. To allow it sometimes, but we help, we help to like. You know, shoehorn this thing together.
Mm hmm.
A lot, I feel like, to help, to help out, um.
I just, yeah. Just wonder if it could, because seven twenties allow, basically with this uh six thousand square foot loss of la- land from the lake or when the lake is high. Seven hundred twenty, so we're asking for about a thousand. Yeah.
It may look unfair from the air, but when you consider the reality of where property lines are drawn, the imaginary line. Should be taken into effect, I think, which you are. We've done that, it's just visually, it does. I don't think anyone's going to put that together right away. Unless you're looking at a survey.
So I just wonder realist, I mean, is it a possibility to make it a little less long? You know, and still get your cars and vehicles in there, maybe five feet narrow, you know, that gives you some hundred, like closer to the standard.
Yeah, I just did a quick calculation, and if uh if you figure twenty two feet for the truck parking and then figure another ten feet for. Uh, which would be about the width of a parking space for another vehicle, and there's an ATV as well, that's another ten feet, so that brings you to. What did I got, forty? I lost track of my. Forty two, I think, yeah, so, but that is a question, because there is also that garage attached to the structure as well, so how much are, you know, how much do you want to accommodate? But that's, that is where the man.
It could be with, and still give people a lot of storage made a little bit.
It would be, but it would, yeah, it would be a squeeze, but that's, I mean.
It's a thought. Yeah, yeah. Anyway.
Do we have the plans for the attached garage and do we know?
Think so, I don't.
It means that it has it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's a two stall garage attached to the home, and then is there additional storage in there for personal items? Yes, I think it's.
Yeah, I. It's hard to see with a lot of studying to know whether.
Yeah.
That car is going to be managed in such a way to help slender that proportion up.
Yeah.
I think that's going to be a difficult ask, though.
I just.
To to push upon. You know, trying to.
Like forty two feet instead of forty seven, you know, could be in compliance and then.
Or twenty two feet down to.
Yeah, that's the part that's hard. Right. Yeah, the depth of it, I, yeah, that I can see, but the length, maybe that could be.
Well, we've already, we've already approved the. The setback.
Yes.
So. I don't know that this. Impacts that so much anymore. Right? I mean, I think we've allowed them to be within the setback, up to five feet, so. Uh, this complies with that design, it's more about. I get, I get what you're saying, the size is still.
It's pretty big.
Pretty big.
We'll have to look at it when it's. We'll have to look at it when it's all done.
Yeah. Could the last seven feet of that thing be chopped off? I mean, who knows?
It, it does create a standard. It's going to be difficult to administer in the future.
So we're point four percent over Mika. And sorry, I'm losing track where I'm at. So thousand thirty-four and allowable was what?
Seven twenty, if we take into consideration the original.
Seven twenty. So three hundred fourteen square feet over.
That's based on the parcel size before you lost the six thousand square feet. To give you the benefit of.
Yeah, give you the benefit of that.
So just just to do the math quick on this thing, if we were to bring this thing into the allowable. You know, to, to cut three hundred fourteen square feet off of this thing, we would have to reduce the forty-seven feet by fourteen feet. That's what I'm getting.
It could be partially though, who could make a partial request.
It could be lesser, yeah. Somebody feels strongly about emotion. I think we're ready to hear it. But I, I, you know, otherwise we're looking at what they've got here of, uh, well, hold on a minute. It says, his first floor says eight hundred eighty square feet.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we, I caught that and then we caught it. I almost noticed it for eight hundred and eighty square feet, but then if you, if you measure the dimensions um, at the forty-seven times twenty-two, then that comes out to the ten sixty, which was what they had in their, um, in their application. So it sounds like the architect may have forgotten to change that when they were moving around with the plan. Yeah.
Okay, thousand thirty, it does. It comes out exactly how you got it in the middle.
Is there any willingness to, to make it a little bit, a few, some feet, maybe not the entire three hundred square feet, but some reducing that by seven feet in the length of this building? Any willingness on the part of the? Okay. Yeah, for these pretty good, yeah, I'm sure you started out with them.
Yeah. So if you take seven feet off this building, it brings you to eight hundred eighty square feet. Looks functional, but I don't know. Without seeing a new drawing of it that way, I don't know how we can ask the applicant to consider, consider less to ensure functionality for them. At least they get the second vehicle and you know, that'd be my concern. Cause yeah, we said a lesser relaxa- relaxation would be to reduce this thing by seven feet as I don't know.
Is the chairman confident with that? Concession?
No, I'm not.
They could come back with a the architect.
You could, could this, this one be tabled for, uh, asking if there would be a lesser relaxation entertained to have it confirmed if it works for them?
That's always something that you could do. I think, um, in cases when you want to do that, you want to make sure that you're giving them really clear what it is that you're looking for. So when they come back, they can be assured of an answer at that point.
Because if we were to deny the request, that is if we're only looking at what the applicant is asking for. So we're either, it doesn't, this doesn't have the same language, does it? As the variance where it says we can consider a lesser relaxation. We are reading absent an agreement from the applicant since we were either granting the denying.
With the administrative approval.
So that's not a, that's not a distinction that we've, I think, made in the past. I think that's a great question. It's not, it's not a distinction that's been made in the past.
I don't think I would be comfortable voting on a reduce width, just pulling a number up the air because I don't know what the justification is for that, other than to say it just seems too big. Right, what Dennis's comments about if we were to approve this as presented, it will create challenges for us as we continue to receive these requests. But the ordinance is written in a way that we are to consider authorizing larger buildings than what it would have placed. So there's
Yeah, the question that comes to my mind is how, how large is too large? I mean, are we already past it or are we just on it? If it continues to trend that way, we're completely faced with this all the time. Right? This is the first time, but.
It's probably the most contentious issue.
Yes, it is the most contentious, I would say. I just don't know where we are in that threshold of acceptance or tolerance for allowing you know, that to continue to move that way and.
What percent over the allowable? Are we at now if the applicant concedes to the discussion that we've had?
At eight hundred and eighty. I'm not sure I can do that map on the fly, Dennis. Give me a second and I'll see if I can figure that out.
Well, there's a standard of size that an accessory building is supposed to be. And if you want it larger than that, it has to come before our board here.
I have it at two point six percent. Just, and that's, I'm reaching back to an old worksheet here, so don't have all of my work shown here, but.
So two.
Okay, that could be.
Yeah.
Is what's being proposed.
Yeah, it's two point four.
Right now at one thousand square feet. It's two point four percent over.
So yeah.
Or sorry, point four, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't think I have that in front of me right now to be able to calculate that.
We don't create these standards. They're given to us. And so then when we get these requests, we have to discuss and decide about compliance. So it is a little tricky for we only get requests for change.
I mean, I get two point one percent. If I'm looking at forty-two thousand one hundred square feet as the property.
Okay, yeah, that's, okay.
If it's eight hundred eighty square feet. That's, that's the lesser. That's not this. This would be, so we got one thousand thirty-four. Two point four five. Yeah. So if you cut seven, let's say you cut seven feet out of this thing, you're improving the overage by, you know, point three percent. So it goes from, it goes to a two point one percent overage. Or two point one percent of the property size.
Yeah, more and more of a standard size of garage or building like that. It's about forty feet, isn't it? More of a standard.
Well, by comparison, when I pulled it aerial to some Google Maps and measured the neighbors to the south, their accessory structure looked to me, I was choosing online measuring tools, but to be about thirty-eight feet wide. So it looks like a lot of two stone with the bump out. But just for comparison.
Right. Yeah.
Is there any trend that you can glean from other approvals in terms of the lot coverage and the percentage that varies over the allowable?
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's been, it's been kind of a wide range and it feels like it's trending upward as far as the approvals that you guys have been making. This one is, I think is a little bit unusual because it's just to the neighborhood that it's in. I think most of them that you hear, um, are on larger parcels, larger rural parcels with an occasional, you know, one in a smaller neighborhood where somebody just wants a little bit of extra size for the workshop kind of thing. So.
So we either have to re- approve this size as presented or not. We can request that the applicant, it come back to us with a smaller footprint or not.
Their choice, right?
Yeah, I, we have a, that's a, it's one or the other.
Yeah, that's a new question actually. So I, I would have to.
It seems like we've requested in the past.
I think so. And so I, I'm not sure when it comes to that distinction between the variance and the administrative approval. It's just not something we've talked about before. So I would have to go find out.
Yeah. So what I'm hearing is there's not a lesser relaxation to offer because we're not provided that avenue to take right now, right? With size, where are we?
That was my question.
That was your question originally.
That's not what's been interpreted in the past.
Okay, okay.
May we ask for, that's why I was wondering too. Can we request them to come back with a smaller footprint?
I just, I think it's putting the applicant in a really hard position for us to offer that to her, for her to accept it. And then for it to never work. And then we're in a pickle. So.
Someone can make a motion with a lesser relaxation and we can vote on it. And if if there is not support or it's not approved, we can continue our discussion or.
For the sake of discussion, be the fall guy. I'd like to move that we, um, accept a reduced size of, um, of, of forty feet in length for the accessory building. What else do I need to say? Twenty foot, twenty-two feet in depth and forty foot in length.
So we have a motion for a lesser relaxation. Do we have? Before we run through the standards on something like that, I guess first of all, we'd have to ask the applicant, but I wonder, Mika, does that require us to first have a quick vote here as to whether there's support for that before moving on?
I have support for the motion.
Support for the motion. But before letting Jane continue through, I mean.
There's, there's support for the motion. That opens it up for discussion.
But maybe there's no support.
So if you'll want to do the review of the standards, but I think you could, you could wait to see if there's support, maybe to redo those if you wanted.
So we heard the motion. Do we have support?
There you go.
I hear no support. So do we have a different motion?
Given that the applicant can't beat the standards, I would make a motion that we deny the request.
Support. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to deny the request that make at this point, do we need to run through the standards? Suppose we
I think you actually.
Probably deny go through each one of these to.
I think that you only need to meet the standards to approve.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, we gotta provide yeah, provide rationale and discussion towards why we're rejecting, right? To substantiate it. So Dennis, can you, you provide?
Are you talking about standard section thirty-eight four ninety-one?
Correct.
Okay, well. Okay, the, the first standard under thirty-eight four ninety-one is the height. And, um, the proposed height of the detached garage is twenty-three feet high.
Well, well, hold on a second Dennis. We want to talk about the size though. I think we've done height. Uh, page four, page four.
Okay.
Sorry.
Same section, drawing, application.
It is, yep.
Okay, the area of the accessory building in relation to the size of the lot on which it can be placed. And the first standard can be met. And that is principally uh, the eff- the effects of the erosion created challenges uh, consistent along the lake shore. Based on the parcels definitions reflected in the GIS and current measurements taken. This parcel lost around six thousand square feet. Fluctuations created by the nature may support an argument uh, for flexibility. Given that, this standard may be met. So number one can be met. Number two, the area of the accessory building in relation to the principal building on the lot on which the accessory building is to be placed. The size of the detached garage is one thousand thirty-four square feet. Compared to four thousand seven hundred square feet for the proposed home. The detached garage will mimic the exterior of the home and is set back. The goal of the building on this lot is to maintain and preserve its many trees and bushes. However, the proposed accessory structure is twenty-two percent the size of the planned residential structure. And in line with other recent approvals. The Board of Appeals agrees that this standard may be met. Third, the location of the accessory building in relation to other buildings on the adjoining lots and in relation to the principal building on the lot. The detached garage is an open area on a lot surrounded by trees and bushes approximately forty feet from the proposed home. Not close to any other buildings from the adjacent lots. The proposed structure would be approximately seventy feet from the nearest neighboring accessory structure on the south side of the parcels. So the Board of Appeals agrees that this standard may be met. The next standard, whether or not the accessory building will affect light air circulation adjoining property. There'll be no effect on the lack of fact of light or air circulation, so this standard may be met. Whether the accessory building will adversely affect the adjoining property and the view from the adjoining property. Because of the placement of the detached garage being set back on the lot in an open area surrounded by mature trees and bushes, there will be no effect on the views of the adjoining properties. There is a grade change of about five feet between the parcel and the parcel south will increase the visual presence of the proposed structure in the area directly surrounding the proposed accessory building. The Board of Appeals may wish to discuss screen, it would be helpful. Depending on the outcome of our conversation. The Board of Appeals feels that this standard may not be met.
So. Dennis, your, your initial motion was to deny the request.
Correct, all the standards have not been met.
Have not been met mainly which, because which one were you alluding to, the last one?
The last one.
Due to the grade change? And the visual presence?
The size, the size.
So I know in our previous, previous motion for um for the setback. We have a condition for the screen buffer to be installed. Which is kind of discussed here, you know, in the staff comments on the last, on the last point. Uh, about adding vegetative buffer or mature. Sorry, am I wrong? Mm-hmm.
But we're doing size for, right now, we're talking about size of the.
Oh, I think the comment was here that the existing vegetation is not substantial, so that gets to the point of, sorry, of what we already discussed for providing that buffer. I guess I'm I'm still not sure about that, or the last argument being strong enough for the denial. Not sure if we've got more that we want to discuss to add to that, to help, to help that.
Well, yeah, it's just not meeting the two percent.
I, I, I thought where we may go is focusing more on the point number one. I, I thought that would be our point of denial more so than the, the fifth standard, I guess.
That'd be point number one, the size.
Open to you adding other substantive.
Yes, I guess I'm, that's without a lesser variance, which we're not comfortable with providing to be added to that argument, I think that that, I guess maybe before we do this vote, would it be more appropriate? If the applicant knows where we're headed with this, for, for the applicant to actually offer the lesser variance to us in lieu of us offering it to, to them to vote upon as that being a lesser relaxation.
You, you can go, you can go either direction. Um, I do think that this board tends to try to work with applicants quite a bit, but knowing the direction that it's going, um, you could offer them that opportunity, um, or you could table it and ask them to come back with something different, or, I mean, I think that there are a range of options there that you could go, or you could continue on with this motion if this is the direction that you think is best.
Is there any willingness um for you to um consider the, a smaller, a slightly smaller building to be more in compliance with our um, the ordinance for size?
So the dif- the difficulty here is we we can't vote upon just, you know, it being less, we have to provide a dimension for you to hit. The concern is if we give you the dimension to go from, it may not work for you, it really may not function. And then we're, you know, we've got egg on our face for allowing that to be the suggestive fix or the lesser relaxation. That's what I'm more concerned about, I'd rather I'd rather that be proved out either with your architect or something like that to say, this is the dimension I need to hit for this to work, and this is as minimal as we go, so I think before putting us each in a difficult spot, we just continue. And we prove the denial and I guess she would, you would reapp, reapply for that part of the variance.
Yep.
Right?
You could do, yeah, you could either do that, or you could table the request and ask them to come back with more information.
Send it back, send it back to the architect or the designer.
My concern is that what, that is an application that has a smaller footprint and height will come back, and I think we've already expressed concerns about the fate. The applicant's already willing to refrain from going taller, um. That, that's my concern about it coming back.
Yeah, is there a, that there could be another height discussion?
Because it would get.
Mm-hmm.
What is, um?
Well, we, we could, we could, we could avoid that and by saying that the denial would be due to the fact that this is forty-seven feet long to constrain maybe what comes back to us as being in the same, you know, the same architecture is coming back to us, it just happens to not be forty-seven feet long, it's forty feet long. Um, I don't know if that manipulation.
I mean, we're utilizing the, the largest square footage on the parcel size to give you the benefit of that, so we're recognizing that your parcel size fluctuates with nature. But we're utilizing the largest number we can to start you off with the base baseline that we can.
Correct.
Uh, so uh, just for sake of conversation, so the eight hundred and years eighty was right around the two percent.
Yeah, two point one.
Thousand thirty-four is two, two point four percent. You mean the difference there, what's?
That's seven feet.
Seven feet.
That's seven feet.
So just what the difference to get it to two point two percent?
Mm-hmm.
Then you're nine hundred.
Right. Nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Yeah, sort of. Two point two seven percent?
When something is twenty-two feet deep.
How long would that be? Yeah, should be three and a half feet, let's take a look here. Nine fifty-seven divided by twenty-two, so forty-three and a half feet long. So, three and a half feet. I mean, we're splitting hairs, but at what point do we allow it to be within something that?
Well, when you're looking at something as small as two percent, point four of a percent is pretty substantial.
Like this, it is.
So obviously, two percent is what's allowed, two point four reveals too big, so it's something between.
It's got to have middle ground.
So I was just.
Concerned about, yeah.
So if we took three and a half feet off of this thing and took it from forty-seven feet to forty-three feet, six inches. We would get to nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Which is two points two percent over. Is that within a tolerance, we could offer re, lesser relaxation to the applicant? Feel good about that?
Be fine. I feel like that's more in within the spirit of the ordinance to allow for a larger building, but when you have five of us up here all uncomfortable with those being presented and we've reviewed a number of these and there's a reason that we feel uncomfortable, right, um, and so I would be more inclined to go to vote favorably around two point two percent.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yep, does that address?
That's fine, and my concern is.
I withdraw my motion and allow the chairman to walk the applicant through the needed process.
Okay. All right, Ms. Foster, would you be acceptable of that lesser relaxation we spoke of, of three and a half feet less in length of the building? So your building would go from forty-seven feet to uh, forty-three feet, six inches? Okay, okay. Okay. That brings our square footage total from what I'm seeing, nine hundred and fifty-seven square feet. Which yields two, two percent over.
It's a big, great question.
It sounds like that's a
We can live with.
We can make a motion with that.
Accept that.
So.
Yes, yes, that's fine, thank you. I didn't know how.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to approve uh, the accessory building size per section thirty. Uh, I'll roll through the five standards, the first that the area accessory building relation, the size of lot that is to be placed. Um, given that the, again, what we spoke of with um property size based on the square footage of the realized property of in a lesser relaxation uh, from what the applicant has requested from forty-seven feet to forty-three feet, six inches. We are in agreement that that standard could be met, which yields the two point two percent uh, overage. It's a point two percent over, correct, sorry.
Percent over, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Two point two percent.
Uh, item two, the area of the accessory building in relation to the principal building on the lot which the accessory building is to be placed. Again, the proposed accessory building is less than twenty-two percent of the size of the planned residential structure and in line with other recent approvals, so that can be met. Uh, standard three, location of the accessory building in relation to other buildings on adjoining lots in a relation to the principal building on the lot. So again, the proposed structure is about seventy feet from the nearest neighboring accessory structure on the south side of the parcel, we agree that can be met. Uh, standard four, whether or not the accessory building will affect light air circulation of any adjoining property. Uh, based on the location of the structures. There's no expectancy of any effectiveness to be had, so we agree that can be met. And standard five, whether the accessory building would adversely affect the adjoining property or from the adjoining property. The grade change of five feet. You know, the, the, the structure is going to have uh, more visual presence. Uh, we already agreed in a previous um variance that an additional vegetative buffering would be provided that offered um a reduction in scale to the structure to help blend it in with the, the context of the, the wooded site. So we feel that that uh, standard could be met.
Support the motion.
We have support, okay, so roll call to for that motion.
Yes.
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you please?
Yes. Okay, so you've got your variance for size setback and we withdrew the request for height.
Yeah.
So. Thank you.
I think you'll.
Thanks for working through with us.
Think it'll be a nice building, the architect will do a good job for you, it's a beautiful building.
Yeah, yeah, I'll send you an email as well.
Mr. Chairman, can we have a brief five-minute recess?
We may. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.